Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, June 18th, meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. And we're going to start with our, um, our agenda here. So the first thing we have is the approval of minutes.
Mr. Chair and I move that we approve the minutes of June 4th, 2025, as written in the record.
Okay.
And I second it.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that stands, thank you so much. And now we'll go to our site plan. And that is AFP dash one zero zero seven two dash two zero two five. Final Architecture for the Residential Units and Community Clubhouse at the Stevenson's Metro Grove Properties in the M X D Mixed Use Zone Amendment to Final Plan. Okay. And Mr. Coleman?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Staff is before you to present Amendment to Final Site Plan Application AFP dash ten seventy-two dash twenty twenty-five, which is for the final architecture for the townhouses, condominiums, and community clubhouse. This application is based on Final Site Plan Application SP dash nine eight eight one dash twenty twenty-four that was approved by the Planning Commission on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. The project is adjacent to the Watkins Mill Town Center development and consists of eight vacant parcels. The project is bounded by Parkland, Parklands at Watkins Mill Town Center Community and Unbuilt Urban Core to the West, the CSX Railroad to the South, and a city-owned property to the North. Existing access point to the site is from Exchange Avenue and Metropolitan Grove Road. Here to present this evening is Chris Mom from Craftsmark Homes.
Thanks for that. Could you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Welcome.
I'm at Craftsmark Homes and I'll be walking you through our proposed townhome and clubhouse architecture for Stevenson Metro Grove. We've been working on this project for several years now. We received, you can hear now, okay, uh, perfect. Uh, Final Site Plan back in, um, January. And we are just about through addressing the conditions of Final Site Plan and hoping to break ground on development in the coming weeks. So we thought now would be a good time to bring forward our generic architecture. Craftmark will be responsible for the townhomes and the clubhouse while Pulte will be building the two-over-two condos. And so with me tonight are Bobby Varner and Claire McCaffrey with Pulte. I'll run through Craftmark's townhomes and also the clubhouse architecture, and then I'll hand it off to them to talk about the two-over-twos.
Okay.
So given I was up here earlier this year, I won't spend too long in this intro other than to say, we've been working on this project going back to 2015, if you can believe it, going on 10 years. It's been a long road, long enough that I had hair when we started getting into this thing. But we're proud of the work we put into this and we're very happy to see it coming to fruition. Here's a snapshot of our approved site plan to show the unit mix and layout. There are two hundred and thirty-two units in the community, a hundred and two, a hundred and ninety-two market rate and thirty-six for-sale affordable units. The blue units on the left, next to the urban core parcels, are Pulte's two-over-twos. The orange units scattered through the middle are twenty-foot-wide affordable townhomes. And the rest, yellow, green, and pink, are our market-rate townhomes, which range in width from twenty feet to twenty-four feet. The black dots indicate the location of the affordable units, which are evenly split between the city's workforce housing program and the MPDU program as required by your code. And all of these homes will have, all the homes in the whole community will have rear-load garages, except for the green units along the northern edge, which will have front-load garages and private backyards which face trees. This slide shows where our high-visibility end units will be located. They're indicated in blue. According to the approved design guidelines, these homes are held to a higher architectural standard on their visible side and rear elevations. Forty-eight of the sixty-six end units are designated as high-visibility, which is close to three-quarters of them. So the majority of end units will have this enhanced treatment. And later in the presentation, we'll show you examples of how we've treated these high-visibility end units to meet the guidelines. For example, wrapping the primary building materials around the side or using thoughtful window patterns or other architectural enhancements. So now I'm going to jump into the townhome architecture, going from our smallest townhomes, which are twenty feet, to our twenty-two footers, to our twenty-four footers. Feel free to stop me as I'm going along and we'll also have time at the end for Q and A. So our twenty-foot-wide rear-load townhome pictured here is called the Westmore. It's about two thousand finished square feet on three levels with a two-car rear-load garage and optional finished attics. From the exterior, there's to be no distinction between the affordable twenty-foot townhomes and the market-rate twenty-foot townhomes. So any of the elevations you see here could be used for either a market rate or an affordable unit. Select twenty-foot lots will have optional eight-foot rear extensions, which add living space and enable partially-covered decks and driveways. Those eight-foot extensions won't be visible from the front, but also cover in the coming slides, you'll be able to see them from the side and rear.
Can you just, for the record, say how wide the, I hate the word affordable, but the other?
Sure, the affordable townhomes are twenty feet wide.
Okay.
Yes, and then there are a handful of affordable two-over-twos, which are located in the lower unit of the two-over-two.
And they'll be, okay, I just wanted to make sure we understand what the difference is.
Oh.
Okay, as far as the, the, the width.
Oh, yeah, there, there, well, so there's, there's no difference.
There's no difference.
So there is no difference in width between the, the MPDUs or affordable units that you're looking at right now.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean it, but, but I just think, I want the record to just to reflect that.
Sure.
And, and what the difference may be in, that, that's all.
Of course, no, you, you guys were very clear and, uh, and, and I think we landed on a good solution here where, um, these affordable units will be evenly dispersed throughout the community. It won't be possible to tell which is from the front because they're, they're going to match the market rates. So, uh, our goal with these homes was obviously to have them reflect, you know, the design goals of the previously approved design guidelines. So I'll just point out some of the things that we did to be in accordance with the design guidelines. One of the things was, this community was supposed to have a similar scale, massing, and density as the adjacent Parklands community. And it was supposed to be built with similar high-quality materials like bricks, stone, semantici siding. But that said, the design guidelines intended this to have, you know, a distinct character and a variety in form and elevation design. And so that's what we were aiming for with this architecture. For additional variety, we developed a couple different color schemes. The first that you saw had beige windows. Again, we're looking at twenty-foot-wide units still. This second scheme is designed with a new color scheme around black windows.
Black mullions, yeah.
Right, uh, for, for both color schemes, all of our front elevations feature real six-inch stone water tables with full height brick above, projecting hardy panel bays in various colors and a variety in the roof lines with dormers, bays, and gables mixed throughout. We've got three canopy styles over the front stoops for visual interest and protection from the weather and a couple different distinct front door styles. All of the units will have thirty-year architectural shingles. So here's what the rear inside elevations of the twenty-foot Westmore units will look like. On the right side of the slide is an example of a high-visibility end unit, where you can see we've wrapped the brick around the full side and maintained a thoughtful balanced window pattern. And we've got stone water tables being carried around the full side elevation as well. That actually happens on both the low and high-visibility condition. The high-visibility rears on all of our townhomes will feature a full brick with stone water tables as pictured on the right side of this slide. These units will offer optional ten-foot decks. So we've pictured some width and some without, so you can get a sense of what it might be like. You also may notice that some are pictured with a, a fourth-story window located within a reverse dormer. And so that indicates the presence of a habitable attic, which will be optional. So that's why we pictured some with and some without.
Answer the question I had.
Most people noticed that and asked, so I figured I'd just tell you. So here we've got the rears and sides of the Westmore extended. That's the one with the eight-foot extension. And so we've pictured this in the black window scheme color. And again, some of our, uh, well, yeah, I mentioned the eight-foot extensions. These extensions will add an extra eight foot of depth on the third level. And that eight-foot extension overhangs and partially encloses the two levels below. So you end up with a partially-covered, partially-enclosed deck and driveway. Separate from the extensions, I mentioned the design guidelines emphasize, you know, strong, high-visibility side elevations, which I think we've addressed here, shown on the left with full brick wrapping the side. The windows are enhanced with pre-casts, headers, and sills, and we've got a, a projecting box bay for added articulation. The stone water table and full-height brick would also wrap the rear where high-visibility rears are stipulated. So our twenty-two-foot-wide front-load townhome is called the Blue Ridge. These units offer around twenty-three hundred finished square feet over three levels and come with two-car garages and optional finished attics. These elevations, as you can see, follow the same design language as the Westmore product, same high-quality materials, same range of projecting elements, and the same focus on varied roof lines in front stoops. Again, the design guidelines emphasize variety in building walls, colors, and materials, the use of high-quality architectural elements to enhance visual character in unified streetscapes with thoughtful differences from unit to unit, all of which we tried to achieve here. On the back of the Blue Ridge units, we're offering some different configurations. Similar to the Westmore, we'll have optional rear decks. The Blue Ridge will also offer optional covered decks, which are pictured here on some of the units. And similar to the Westmore, we're also showing the attic egress windows where optional attics are built. High-visibility sides and rears, which are pictured on the right, will again receive enhanced treatment with full brick, thoughtful window design, and stone water tables that wrap the side. Here, we're also showing a projecting awning on that side elevation for added articulation. So here we have our twenty-foot, twenty-four-foot-wide Seneca unit. These units will offer twenty-five hundred finished square feet over three levels, come with two-car garages, rear-loaded, uh, optional finished attics, and optional elevators. The Seneca follows the same elevation styling as the Westmore and Blue Ridge, so that we maintain consistency across the community regardless of home size. And this slide also illustrates how affordable units will be skinned identically to match the market rates. So all the affordable units will be twenty-foot wide. So here you can see an example of a twenty-foot-wide affordable unit blended into a building of twenty-four-foot-wide market-rate homes, and they share the same color and design.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Will the affordable units have, uh, the ability to add an elevator also?
So unfortunately, our twenty-foot floor plan just simply can't fit it. So the only units in the community that will offer the elevators are the twenty-four footers because of the extra width.
Okay, thank you.
Here we've got the Seneca pictured in the black window color scheme. Again, we've got a range of colors, brick tones, and elevations to meet the design guideline requirements that no three consecutive units can be the same. And that standard reflects a broader intent of the guidelines to promote a visual interest in architectural variety throughout the community. Additional features include masonry water tables extending to at least the first-floor windows as stipulated by the guidelines. But we've also, in some cases, raised the stone water table to the first story for added visual interest. There's a variety of architectural elements, including bays, awnings, and dormers, as well as, uh, it's all durable, low-maintenance materials like hardy, brick, stone. We've got fiberglass doors, aluminum gutters and downspouts, thirty-year architectural shingles, standing seam metal roofs on the canopies, pre-casts, headers, and sills, et cetera. And so the rear and side elevations of the Seneca follow the same design principles as the other townhomes. We've got optional decks, optional attics with egress windows. Also, since these homes are a bit wider, they allow for a rear pedestrian door next to the overhead garage door. And the high-visibility sides and rears pictured on the left will use a similar enhanced design treatment with full brick or, or masonry. This slide is just a quick summary of the color schemes that you've kind of already seen through our renderings. The overall goal was to have a, you know, mix of brick tones and bay colors and hardy accents and roof features to give each home a sense of individuality while keeping a cohesive look across the community. So as part of this, we're also requesting approval for our clubhouse architecture. Here's a couple perspective renderings of the proposed building. It has a modern design with a monopitched roof and an extended overhangs. Inside will house all the necessary pool support facilities like bathrooms, a lifeguard office, pool equipment, and storage. Outside, there's a covered pavilion that connects to the community sidewalk network and will serve as a year-round gathering space for residents. Overall, we think the clubhouse's modern design with clearly expressed roof forms and integrated outdoor space aligns with the guidelines' call for a strong architectural identity in, um, active community gathering spaces. So that about wraps up, um, the townhome and clubhouse portion. Do you guys have any questions for me now? We can also just pause and do questions at the end, however you want to handle it.
I just, go ahead. I just, what are the building materials for the clubhouse?
Sure, and so that's a great question. The, um, what you see, it's, it's all semantici ship-lap siding. And so what we were proposing is kind of a wood-grained semantici siding. It's called nichi, nichi hot, it's very high-end. It has a cool ship-lap profile. And then it would be that same type of siding, only, uh, black, um, on, on the pavilion.
I have several questions on the, uh, on the townhouses. The dormers and the, uh, gables that you showed on the front elevations, are those going to be standard or are those going to be the options?
So we, we will, uh, we don't let our customers, uh, lay out the buildings. So what we do is we, we lay out every single townhome building ahead of time. It's particularly important in Gaithersburg because of the recite process. And so we come in, we pre-select every elevation for every lot, and then the customers can choose what lot they buy. So if they, if they want a gable, they'll have to choose a lot that has already been predetermined to have a gable. And we always try to create a variety in the roof line like you see here.
Right.
So that you, you're basically creating that interest in variety. So you, you don't have too many gables, but you also don't have not enough gables, it's a balance.
But to his point, does that mean that some will not be able to have an optional fourth?
No, and so interestingly, the, uh, way that we build them, uh, these are actually all fault, the, all the windows you see on the front of the unit, those lead into unconditioned attic space, not finished space. So there, there's actually a false dormer and a false window.
Okay.
The only egress, uh, is out the back through those egress windows.
Okay.
That's part of keeping it under the IRC. It's not considered a full-four-story. As soon as you pop the roof line with a real dormer, that is now a full-four-story and you're under the IBC. We intentionally try to keep these under IRC. And so that's, that's, that's the main reason we do it that way.
Thank you.
The rare conditions of the, uh, all those townhouses, they're all different colors on the schematic here.
Yes.
Will they be all different colors?
Most definitely, yeah, we know that's important to you guys. One of the early communities we did, uh, maybe it was Devlin Property, you guys pushed us to do that. And we've been doing it everywhere since. It's just a little thing, but it, it just adds variety and, um, yeah, so.
It's actually a nice thing, especially.
It is a nice thing.
Something as, as dense as this.
For sure.
You see a lot of the rear, rear wheels, the rear walls as opposed to, uh, one monochromatic, uh, one, one chromatic type of color, this makes more sense. And I like the variety, I like the changes in the roof line, uh, and I like the in-units.
Thank you.
Done a good job with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so talk to me about the garages. I want to understand that the garages in the affordable, you know, units are very, you know, similar to the other ones.
Let me go to, um, so there, there is, there is going to be no difference. So, um, it's going to be the same floor plan. In our twenty-foot garage, I, I think it's a good garage. It's deeper than most, uh, uh, at, at one point, I think it's twenty-one and a half feet, which is, uh, deeper than most townhome garages these days. Not for the full depth, but at least for half of it, I think. So you have room to put trashcans in front of your cars on one side.
Right, I think most are like eighteen or something like that.
Right, I mean, that's the minute, that's, that's the minimum, right? And, and I get it, there's pressures to make the finished square footage as high as possible. The garages are important, so we get it.
Right, okay, and, and then you said that there were some that have like a separate door?
That was just on the twenty-four footers.
Twenty fours?
Because we can fit, yeah. So on the twenty-four footers, there's actually enough space to have a sixteen-foot-wide overhead garage door.
Right.
And have a pedestrian access door. So say you, you know, it's just a little easier to get in and out of the back if you don't want to open the overhead one.
Right, nice.
Can you tell me where the HVAC units are going to be?
Sure, and that was actually a comment from staff that, uh, before we get final, final approval, we've got to go on our black-and-white elevations and add them. And so the, they'll be located, uh, you know, in, in front of, so there's basically a, a maybe a three-by-three area in front of this little pedestrian door there, um, that you'll walk out to. You'll have space, uh, in front of the compressor there to turn and get onto your driveway.
But that's the twenty-four footers, what about the twenty-footers?
Yeah, so the twenty-footers, you'll see we, um, excuse me, oh, I went the wrong way. The twenty-footers, you'll see, we offset the garage door to one side. And the reason that we do that is to allow for the compressors to fit on the other side. We also put language in the HOA documents that allow people's compressors to overlap the lot line. Because the reality is, on these tight sites, it's just flexibility that's smart to put in, so.
So does that mean that the, the utilities, the HVAC units are in the garage space?
No, no, they're, they're located outside of the garage in between, uh, so the, these are posted decks.
I'm talking about the, the furnace.
The, oh, 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 so the, the compressors are located outside.
Yeah, the compressors, I'm not talking about the furnace.
Furnaces are located in a, in a, in a space, um, it's a conditioned space inside the house in a closet, yeah.
In a closet with the hot water heater?
Yes, we, we, we have a, a one large closet that fits the furnace and the hot water heater, yeah.
I'd like to go back to the HVACs and the external part. They'll be very vulnerable, I would imagine, because they are tight as far as the driveways go. Will there be any protection around those units? Or will those units be just freestanding and somehow?
So they, they get put close to that deck post, and that's, that, that provides like, almost like a bollard-type protection for them. I will say, we, we do a lot of twenty-foot townhomes and, um, we have not had an issue with cars striking the compressors. I think it's because of the, where we put them and the length of our driveways, you know, you're not necessarily swinging in and turning in right near, which is probably where it'd be most vulnerable, like at the edge of the driveway near the alley. We've got it tucked in closer to the house where you tend to be going more straight in and out. It's a good point, but on this type of product with this length of driveway, it has not been an issue with this.
I mean, there, there are small kind of bollards that you can put around them though.
Sure.
Kind of edge ones or something.
If, if it became an issue, it'd definitely be something we'd look into, but, uh, as of right now, it just hasn't come up, uh, so.
Will there be gas in these, in these units?
Yes, yes.
Where will I, will with the gas, for instance, the?
Meter?
Yeah, and so we, uh, we've got, um, for the townhomes, we've got the gas meters located on the front of the units and the electric meters located on the back. And that's something that Craftmark has always been okay with. We're very sensitive to having meters on the front. You know, we're going to put this type of thought into the architecture. I hate to slap a big ugly meter. However, the gas meters, when you tuck them up against these stone foundations and you paint them gray and you put a bush in front of it, they disappear. It's just a non-issue. And we have plenty of space in that little offset area for the electric meters on the back.
Thank you.
I, I had one more question. So, you know, we have the, the homes that had the garages in the front and then the garages in the back too, to face the parkland. Does it, does the pitch of the roof change at all? And my question is really leading to the water drainage when it, when it rains.
No, um, we, we, I think we're using eight-twelve roof pitches across the board here. So, um, regardless as to the, uh, the product, whether it's the, the twenty, the twenty-two, which is the front-loaded units you're referring to, or the, or the twenty-fours, they all use an eight-twelve pitch, which is a pretty steep pitch and, and, um, it's pretty traditional and it, it gets water off with a quickness, so it shouldn't be an issue.
Thank you, that was good for me.
Okay. Alrighty, so are we going to?
Sure, yeah, I'll hand it over to Bobby.
Sure, and then we'll go to questions.
Thank you. Sorry, I'll get you on your slides. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Perfect, uh, thanks, Chris, appreciate that. I will echo, uh, Chris's sentiment in that I also had hair before I started this job. So, that said though, before we get started, I did want to thank Sam and the rest of his staff. This has been, quite frankly, a breath of fresh air going through this process with the city. Claire and I, and I'm sure Chris has as well, have been through similar processes with many other jurisdictions in the area. And the, the collaboration and help on this front has been great. So, uh, we appreciate that and we look forward to continuing that work with the city.
Just state your name for the record, please.
What's that?
Just state your name for the record.
Oh, sorry, my name is Bobby Varner. I'm the Director of Land Planning for Pulte. And I'm joined by Claire McCaffrey, our architect, who is the brain behind this operation. Won't spend too much time talking about Pulte, but in the event anyone's not familiar with us, uh, we're one of the nation's largest home builders. We've been around since about nineteen fifty. Have created a pretty strong footprint in the DMV area over the last couple of years, and namely in the I-270 corridor. We're here today to talk about the two-over-two stacked condominium units that Pulte will be building in this community. Our job is a little bit easier than Chris's here because we only have one product to show you. So a couple fewer slides, but, um, we've been doing the two-over-two condominiums all throughout the area now. We have a couple active projects with two-over-twos in the city of Rockville with a couple more on the way. And the picture you're seeing here actually is from Pulte's previous two-over-two condominium project in Gaithersburg at Crown Farm. So we're looking forward to, to getting back to it. That was very successful for us and our buyers are very happy, so looking forward to being back. And, uh, I'm about to pass it off to Claire in a couple minutes. And we didn't go through specifically and show all the different iterations in our two-over-two footprints here. But, uh, as Claire will go into details in a couple minutes, you'll see we did, uh, same as Chris. We kind of pored over the design guidelines to make sure we were, um, hitting every aspect of them. And through the collaboration with Sam and his team, feel that we've, you know, put forth a pretty nice-looking product that we'll be proud to stand behind. So, uh, looking forward to this one, but, uh, Claire?
Okay, all right, thanks, Bobby. Again, I'm Claire McCaffrey, I'm an architect with Pulte, uh, registered in Maryland and, uh, and other states. Just a couple, couple comments about our two-over-two stacked condominium product. Our objection, I'm sorry, our objective at Stevenson Metro, Stevenson Metro Grove site is to successfully build out the vision outlined in the design guidelines. We're providing a housing option with high architectural standards that reinforce the community's unique identity. We relied heavily on the architectural design guidelines as our north star. Pulte has six buildings on the site of mixed lengths of four, five, and six footprints together for eight, ten, and twelve total units per building. In traditional two-over-two stacked condominium style, they're designed to reflect individual townhouse architecture. We have designed six unique elevations noted in the submission package as elevations A through F. Thus, there's no repetition of use within a building string. We are, uh, also proposing ten color packages. So the final strings will provide a true variety in design and character. Per the design guidelines, architectural elements that you can see, this is a sample six-string building, front facade. Architectural elements include high-quality, uh, building materials, including brick and fiber cement, variation in depth and building face that every facade has relief. Ten color schemes allow us not to repeat a color scheme in any building string. Fifty percent of the front of building walls to be masonry. Pulte will meet and exceed this percentage minimum. We can go to the next slide. Here's a, here's a, a sample rear end to address a previous comment. The color scheme does stay with the footprint on the back. We do understand it, it's also important to homeowners to be able to say, I'm the blue one on the right. You know, that's, that's a, that's their north star, so I get it, it helps, and it's great. This typical rear shows, uh, board and battened siding on the end units. Lap siding in the, in the center units shows a cantilever deck option that is, is going to be offered on the second and third stories off the living spaces and bedroom space. Let's see what else, uh, we can see here. It just identifies all the, all the building materials that all comply with, uh, with the design guidelines. We can go to the next slide, and we can come back to these if people.
I was going to say, quickly, if I could jump in, Bobby Varner, Pulte, again. The question did come up regarding the HVAC condensers. You can actually see them here.
Yeah.
You can see the cursor in between the garages here. And to try to put some minds at ease, I will say, I mentioned earlier, we're doing the two-over-two units all throughout the area now. And we put the condensers in the same location every time, have not had any issues with it so far. So, uh, fingers crossed that continues, but I don't see any issues with that.
Okay.
Okay, and here are a couple of example side elevations. The, uh, frequency of the high-visibility lots reinforces expectations of elevated design. Material continuity wrapping sides and rears along with the similar architectural elements from that front facade, front facade will come around to the side as well. Window locations are rational and pleasing to the eye. And they enhance the, the unit interior and the user experience. Additionally, brick niches are located purposefully to provide relief. Additionally, brick niches are located purposefully to provide relief at longer expanses of wall. That kind of summarizes what I've got to say, but I'm happy to field any questions.
I believe we do have, yes, we, so Claire mentioned, we have 10 different color schemes out here. It's a little hard to see. I'll try to fit them in on the next couple of slides, but these are all in the staff packet as well to show that we do have quite a good variety out here and won't run into
Can you explain on, go back to the high-visibility section? Back two slides or more. There's a, on the bottom there, it looks like there's a, I don't know whether it's a storage area or what those three doors reflect.
Yes, that's a utility, like a shed. So one half of the shed is usually a water room for a sprinkler system, and the other smaller, single door would be for electrical panel.
Is that exclusively for the high-visibility, or is that all the end units?
No, that's going to be one end of each building string, and it could be on the high, it could be on the low. On the full package, in the black and white sections, I did share what each potential condition could be.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I asked all my questions before, so.
You blew it all.
All right. So back to the garages. No, nothing special there. Talk about, just a little bit about the garages.
Every, each garage gets their own light fixture and own address number. It's probably even a requirement, but that's another one of these things that homeowners kind of, it's very helpful for deliveries and everything, and just finding home. Again, the decks, there is a covered, on the third floor, in that living, off the kitchen, is a covered patio area, which you can kind of see in the recess. There's a door and a pair of windows. There's a cantilevered six-foot-deep additional balcony option. So the third floor, the upper unit, does have the option for a good sizable outdoor living additional space. The lower unit, oh, I'm sorry, that's the third floor. That's off of, I'm confused. That is, that's the upper unit living level. The second floor is also for that lower, is for the lower unit outdoor space. You know, it gives them something.
But you said that's at the bedroom level, though? For the, for the lower unit?
Yes, that's off the bedroom. So I'm getting confused between my units.
I mean, you'd mentioned it.
Yep.
Yeah, during the discussion.
Yes.
Okay.
Can we go back to the schematic of the streetscape, please? Is it right at the very beginning?
Oh, this is a sample, similar product type that we have built.
I'd like to actually go back to the actual, I want to see where the units are, the high level.
Right.
Because I was noticing that on one of the schematics, let's go, keep going.
Oh, that was it? The high vis?
There it is. On Legacy Street, it looks like the high-visibility, if you go to the, from the bottom up, the first impasse, can you do the high-visibility units again? There we go. That's it. You can see that there's a section there that doesn't have high-visibility. If you go from Legacy Street, going north, I believe that is, there's no blue end unit that's designated, yet you've got two end units on the Puffview Avenue. Can you explain why those aren't high-visibility?
So I think Craftmark is probably to blame for anything with this. I think we determined the high-visibility sides before Pulte was involved, and so I believe the high-visibility sides were determined to be in locations where you either were adjacent to a road, or you had a public sidewalk running in between the units, or for some reason you had a wider spacing between the units. And so I think the two that you mentioned.
It's a narrower space.
It's just a narrow space with no sidewalk in between. So here, you actually have a sidewalk going in between them, which is why that one got designated as high-vis.
That makes sense. Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Is that it?
That's all I've got.
Now, is there anyone here inside, in our space now, who would like to comment or make comments? No? All right. Looks like we've got one person online. Can we, can staff play the little preamble for?
We don't play that anymore.
Oh, we don't do that?
I would just say, if anyone online does wish to provide any comments tonight, they can hit the raise hand button.
Okay. Yes, anyone online, hit the raise hand button if you'd like to make a comment or have a question. I think, is it Tamara Wolf?
Yeah, no one's hands raised.
No, no hands raised. All righty. Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Anything from staff that you want to kind of?
Read the, yeah.
No, no condition?
Oh, the recommendations.
Recommendations?
Yes. Staff recommends to the planning commission. Based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony, the staff report, findings and recommendation, grant AFP-1072-2025 Amendment to Final Site Plan Approval, finding it in conformance with Section 24-12.6E and 24-12.6G of the city's zoning ordinance with one condition of approval.
Can you read it in place?
Yeah. The condition of approval reads, "Prior to plan certification, the applicant to revise elevations to address minor plan comments to be reviewed and approved by planning staff."
Okay. Thank you. All right. So any comments?
Well, I did notice that the staff in their findings noted that there were some minor labeling errors and drafting errors, and that will be corrected, I assume, prior to the acceptance of the plan. But I just want to make note of that. Okay. Thank you. My comment is, I think this is a great addition to the city and to the neighborhood, and appreciate you actually listening to our comments and making changes to them, for them. And I look forward to you breaking ground and getting forward with this. It's a great addition, and it may hopefully stimulate the town center, which we've been anxious to see go in.
Yes.
I think the same, and to echo Lloyd's comments, that this is a wonderful addition to the Metropolitan Grove area, and having lived literally across the street from that area for the last 40 years, that it's certainly time to make that a vibrant part of our community, too. So thank you.
I echo her comments because we're neighbors. We're neighbors. I've been living in for 40 years, too. So it's a great, I mean, I come home that way every day, and I'm looking forward to seeing this happen. I do, and also want to echo what my colleague Lloyd said, of you taking the care to listen, to look at the design guidelines and be responsive and responsible to that for us. We really appreciate that. You all have done a great job with this. I'm looking forward to this being online. Thank you very much.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, you want a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony, staff report, findings, and recommendation, grant AFP-10072-2025 Amendment to Final Site Plan Approval, finding it in conformance with Sections 24-12.6E and 24-12.6G of the city's zoning ordinance with the one condition previously read into the record.
Second.
Okay. Thank you very much. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.